... United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, blessed assemblage, grant us the wisdom to make every decision fair-minded and in the best interest for all its residents. Amen.
Hope, please call the roll.
Counselperson Pamela Jaffe.
Here.
Counselperson Jill Axelrod.
Here.
Counselperson Thomas Nardi.
Here.
Counselperson Randy Selyer.
Present.
And Supervisor Carrie Zuckerman.
Here. Note Pam Jaffe is away on business and is appearing via Zoom and telephone, as the case may be. May I have a motion, unless there are objections, changes, may I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of both May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the special meeting of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is a continuation of the public hearing on a local law to change the elected office of receiver of taxes and assessments to an appointed office. The hearing remains open from our last meeting. Are there any members of the public which to speak on this matter at this time? Do we have anybody on Facebook or Zoom that wishes to speak? Debbie?
Checking Facebook. There's, the meeting is not live on Facebook, so at the moment, no.
Okay. Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Hope, please call the roll.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Selyer.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Resolution, adopting the local law, bring it forward. Do we have any form of motion?
I'll make a motion to table the item.
Second.
Second.
Motion to table is made. Hope, please call the roll.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Selyer.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, thank you. That matter is table for further consideration possibly in the future. It is no longer on the agenda. We have a presentation. Rock the Boat. Andy Bodnar. Please step up.
You want to start with your movie?
Oh, maybe.
This is a project.
My name's Andy Bodnar. This is my buddy Angus Scott.
If you own a home.
I do. Zero dollar solar, you might want to take a break and look at me.
From now on, we're going to do all of these things through AI.
So we do a, we do a concert. It's kind of my community service for the last five or six years. And we do a concert out in Milton Harbor, usually on the Fourth of July. That one that you just saw, I believe that was Labor Day one, maybe?
Yeah, probably.
Probably Labor Day. And so what we do is, as you saw all the floats, we kind of build ourselves a floating stage out there with a couple of generators on board. And then we use about four or five local bands. Usually like to get one band with high school students if we can, kind of get them involved as well. And then folks come out by boat or by kayak or by floaty toy, kind of any way they can get out there, and they enjoy the day. It usually runs from about two o'clock until six o'clock, six thirty. And we've always done it on the floats. And the issue is, we have to transport musicians, we have to transport power, build this whole stage thing out of floats, and logistically, it gets to be a pain in the neck. So Angus came up with the idea that maybe we should ask Rye Town to use the end of your pier to have our stage. And therefore, it's a lot easier to get people to and from, to and from the stage. The power can be run, but we're in kind of talks with American Yacht Club and Shenrock Shore Club, which are right kind of sandwiching that pier, I'm sure you all know. And because we would get power from them and parking for some of our musicians between the two clubs. So this way, we're not taking up the parking right at the front entrance there, although that would be helpful. There's only about five or six spaces, I believe, there. So our plan is to put the stage out at the end of the pier. We start at two o'clock. Each band plays for about an hour. And it's all local, you know, a lot of parents kind of bands, that kind of thing, and have a nice family day of it. We've been doing it for quite a while, and it's a, it's a, it's a pretty cool show out there, it really is. So we're just trying to make it safer and easier, and we thought your pier would be the best way to do that. How we're doing so far?
Yeah, I think you're covering all the points. The one thing I wanted to emphasize was, the people on the pier would just be musicians and people working the event, like the sound guy. The audience is completely out on boats. So I know that's a fairly congested area down Stuyvesant Avenue. It's now at the end there, there's not a lot of parking. So we're very aware of that. We want to make sure that, you know, we won't be having a party on the pier, it's just putting the stage area. And then people bring up their boats, anchor up, have a nice day, and yeah, that's basically it. So we either have done it on Fourth of July weekend or Labor Day weekend over the last five years, and we're looking for your permission to use the pier to do that.
The one thing I'll say, we usually have two dates because you have that rain day. So it would be Saturday, August thirty-one, or Sunday, the Sunday before Labor Day on the first, because there's so much planning. And we've had it before, where, you know, years before, where we've had to postpone until the next day. But we have, the bands all know that beforehand, so do the sound people. So they kind of book in for two days. And, and it's usually at two, about two to six thirty by the time all is said and done. We would probably be on the pier till almost eight by the time we pack up everything and all that kind of stuff, you know, the sound people. We have a professional sound crew that comes, takes care of it. So the musicians just kind of walk in with their guitars or their keyboard or whatever, but everything else is all set up for the day. The whole backline, sound system, VA, and all that kind of stuff. And I think that's kind of all we got.
All right. I'm just going to weigh in a little bit. First of all, we own the pier. We do not own the water. Okay? The water belongs to the city of Rye, that's my understanding. So you'd have to talk to them. I know we have representatives from the American Yacht Club here who have an opinion on this, and you can come up and, and speak to it. Also, the street parking is also the city of Rye. So my personal view is, and I'd like the other members to weigh in, I'm happy for you to use the pier. I think it's a great idea, looks like a lot of fun, makes more sense than floating in the water with, with the musicians, probably a lot safer, too. Yeah.
Some of these musicians are not boaters. They get a green behind the drum set once in a while.
One could think, I mean, I'm, I'm reminded of a politician very recently who was wondering if with all the electrical equip, you know, an electric boat might sink and what about the sharks? So, you know, I think it's a lot safer on the pier. But, but, again, I think that you need to work out the arrangements with Shenrock and American Yacht Club and with the city of Rye as appropriate. And as far as the pier is concerned, I'm fine with the pier. See, other stuff, which we have no say over.
Exactly. We also, every year when I do this, the very first people that I go to is our marine department in Rye. And they have three boats on the water, and they are out there the entire day. It's one of their favorite gigs of the year, actually, but they, oh yeah, they're having a good time, too. But they, so that's my first thing, is those guys. And I also put the Seatow guys on notice, just so they know what we've got going on. So it's always been, you know, safety is definitely the number one priority here. Actually, what I do in the float situation that you saw there, I always go to Rye PD before the, the gig, and they have about forty life jackets from Army Surplus, they're all really very nice. But I have all those on our float, so if there was any kind of issue, everybody's got a life jacket. Because we, by the time it's all said and done, you probably have forty, fifty people on that float between bands, sound guys, and all that kind of thing. The bands are getting jockeyed in and out, but some stay around to see, you know, catch part of the show kind of thing. Because we have to see that. We always use three water taxis to bring everybody out between bands and equipment. So that's one thing off the list. Hopefully, electric is another thing off the list. And a more stable spot, you know, above all, so.
The dock doesn't rock.
Excuse me?
The dock does not rock.
The dock does not.
Only the boats rock.
That's why we're rocking the boats, sir.
Jill, Jill had something.
Do you have liability insurance with this?
I have never, I have never. As far as I was concerned, I was just throwing a gig on my float, and if somebody wanted to come by, knock yourself out. And it's been a very community service kind of setup throughout. So I have never, I have a float out in the harbor and a boat, and back in the day, I had a band as well. And I was like, well, I got a boat and a float, so, and a band, let's, let's do it, you know? And it's just grown since then. But I have not, and we've had no instances. We have, always, as I say, we always have PD on site, and if there was any nonsense there, right there, I've probably got the best eye out there because I'm up in the stage area. But everybody comes in, ties up their boats, family members and kids that are all on kayaks and floaty toys and dancing on the ball of their boats sometimes.
Angie, if I may, I checked in with our insurance broker, and they recommend a one-day event insurance with specifications that we can communicate with when you're ready, but he said that should just cost you a couple hundred dollars.
And that's, and really, it's really more the concern of us being on the pier part of it, not so much having the water, correct?
Anybody, anybody who uses a town facility for any purpose has to have insurance.
Got it, got it. I understand, I understand.
Now, I'm not trying to ruffle any feathers, but in case the yacht clubs say no about using electricity and parking, what are you going to do with that?
Then I would use the two sixty-five-hundred generators that we usually use, which powers the entire setup. Not quite as quiet. What we usually do, at least what we do out in, out in the harbor, we build a three-sided hut that is insulated so as to keep the sound down for the bands, and that's located behind the stage. That's how we've done it in the past. If the clubs wouldn't help us out, then I would say we go with the generator.
And what about parking?
Excuse me?
What about parking? Because parking will be an issue if the, if the yacht clubs say no, and they're going to have a problem with parking.
You know what I would do in that situation? I would have a, I would have the bands park at Milton School, which is on Milton, was on Hewlett Avenue, actually, and we'd run a shuttle service. That would be the easiest way. Because what happens is, even now, or in years past, the bands park at the school, they come across the street, and our shuttle service is by boat. So I always have had three water taxis that jockey bands back and forth. So it's kind of the same thing, except I would just be using a shuttle.
Well, with me, anything with music goes, so I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I said almost anything with music goes with me, so that's fine with me.
There you go, there you go.
I just want your event to run smoothly, that's all.
Oh, yes, I believe.
Tommy wants, Tommy wants to play in the middle of the dance.
No, 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 no.
Not a problem. We got, whatever, whatever you need, you're ready to roll.
I just need to listen, that's all.
There you go. I used to play myself, I do not any longer, I just like to put this on and I like to watch. And now that I've got Angus and some of the other band people helping out, it makes it a lot easier for me.
I thi, I think, look, I think we all like the idea of music on the water. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem personally with using the town pier as a centerpiece to set up, but I think it needs to be worked out with the yacht clubs and, you know, you know, make a final plan.
Got it.
All right. One of the representatives right here, do you want to speak?
I would like to. No, I would like to speak after this gentleman here as a representative of Shenrock.
Oh, cool. Okay, your name?
Brett.
Brett, Andy.
I'm Tom Tobin.
Hey, Tom.
I'm the current mayor of Commodore, an American, and the leadership has asked me to come and speak with regard to the Rock the Boat possibility on the pier. I've attended the Rock the Boat kind of festival in the past, a lot of our members have, we think it's fantastic. We want to be very supportive of it, but we are concerned about the proposed location. We have concerns about the water and the land. The concern we have about the water is that this is an active mooring field. It's a very tight mooring field. It's very different than what you saw in the video where there's open water. This event belongs where there's open water. The reason is, all of the boats, the rafting, the people in the water, they're having a great time, and they can do that safely. When you move it to the pier, immediately outside of the pier is a tight mooring field. American Yacht Club has thirty boats in the mooring field immediately off the pier. Nobody can anchor out there, because if you anchor, the wind is going to blow you into those boats. The other problem out there is, it's an active mooring field. We have launches going back and forth, dropping people off on boats. Boats are coming, boats are going. The concern we have is that this event, which we're very familiar with, it's a lot of people in the water, it's paddle boards, it's kayaks, it's people swimming with our launches dropping people off. It is not safe. It's not a safe venue. The best venue is somewhere else. It's got to be on the water. You cannot put it there. It's dangerous. It's dangerous to the people attending.
Can you, can you point on, on the large map?
Sure. On this screen, the piers here.
Yeah.
This yellow line that we put in represents that the, the north of it is Shenrock moorings, south of it is American Yacht Club moorings. And we had understood that Shenrock, I'm not sure Shenrock will, will share, they were going to move some boats off the moorings to make room, but their moorings are up here. The moorings that we're worried about are right here.
And where was it, where was the, the festival prior? Was that on the?
Way up the harbor, way up north in the harbor, where it's open water.
So it wasn't?
Everybody wants it in open water. This is the wrong location.
So Rock the Boat, Rock the Boat was not previously in any of this area?
No. It's, it doesn't belong in a mooring field. It's crazy to put it in a mooring field with all of the launch service, people in the water, and then it's a festive environment. There's a lot of beer drinking, everything else going on. It's a formula for disaster. That's our point of view. The other part of it that we're concerned about is the land part. This pier was never intended as a concert venue. There's some suggestion that the bands are going to be out at the end of the pier, and there will be nobody bothering them at the, at the head of the pier. I, I guess time will see if, in fact, you allow it to proceed. There are five or six parking spaces there. We think a lot of people are going to want to come and hear this concert from land. It's the first time it's there. There, it's a dead end at Stuyvesant. When you bring a car in, you've got to do a three-point turn to drive out. If you put seven or eight cars there, that three-point turn becomes a five-point turn. It, it's, it is not intended as a concert venue.
Well, I would think, first of all, Andy, he's correct in where it was located prior? It was not in this area prior, correct?
It's across, it's across the channel and right up the Marshall Angler Service.
It's far away, it's not, it's not over here, not on this picture, correct?
Uh, no, I didn't see that close enough, I wouldn't say.
All right.
It's, it's on the other side of the channel, for sure.
I want to hear from the other council members, but my feeling is that it's premature for us to give permission at this time. I think that there, you, you all have to talk with both yacht clubs, see if you can come to an accommodation, and especially, talk to the Rye PD, because if you're going to use the land, they're going to have to be the ones that control the traffic at the end of Stuyvesant Avenue and by the, you know, by the American Yacht Club and where the pier is. Because that is a total dead end. They're going to maybe want two or three police officers there if you have a lot of people. So I think that you, you have to have these conversations, you know, so that everybody can come to an agreement. There may be an agreement that you could use this based on conversations that you have with the yacht clubs, and then there may, may be no agreement, and you might have to put it where it was before. But I think we're too premature now to say, okay, you can do this.
And there are other locations, like at the end of Dearborn, or if it's adjacent to Wright Park, you could do it there, you could do a Plainland Pier.
Where you're more by the rocks.
There are all kinds of places you could have. Well, you can't be in the middle of a mooring field, you can't do it.
No, one of the things is Rye Town, you know, you.
I think most of the, most of the traffic that you will have in front of the stage will be kayak and floating stuff and paddle, and paddleboard. I don't think you're going to see a whole lot of mooring.
I was just going to say, Dearborn Avenue.
What we are thinking in Rye Town as well is a bigger sound system, so it does carry back. Because I, like, for instance, most boats that have, have the floats out there and that kind of stuff, they're not going to come, they're going to stay right on their float because of music.
Andy, Andy, Andy.
I'm sorry.
One of, one of the things, Tom mentioned Dearborn Avenue. I mean, that's a possibility. I don't know if the city of Rye would allow that, but right near Rye Town Park, you have all of the length of Dearborn Avenue ending in, in the, you know, in the seawall over there.
Yeah, it's all rocky front there, you can't really go there.
It's rocky on the side, is it rocks in the front?
Plenty of kayak access and small.
Honestly, you could do it over there, be a county situation, like the Plainland Pier. That would be the only thing. Everything else is all rocky. Anybody who boats along on sound knows that that whole area is probably rocky. Come here.
No, sure, can we just know where you, yep. I mean, quickly, my name is Brett Palmer, I'm the general manager of Shenrock Shore Club, and I've been sent to represent, it's very similar to American Yacht Club. Our club shares the same sentiment as American Yacht Club. Our members have enjoyed the Rock the Boat concert and its current position where it is. You know, it's kind of come through the grapevine to, to our club, and almost as, as a surprise that this approval was being sought before the town of Rye. You know, just having learned about it in the last couple of days. But again, we feel very much.
Mike Bresio.
Yes, I understand. Mike Bresio did mention it, and I believe you approached a, a member, a non-board member of the club about potentially even using Shenrock, and at that point, we had denied it. We share the same concerns as American Yacht Club about it, with Stuyvesant Avenue being such a funnel that funnels to a dead end. As far as I know, city manager is unaware of the proposal at this point, city of Rye management. Okay, city management is, is not, and again, as Supervisor Zuckerman said, the, the subsequent steps, the appropriate steps that need to be taken, don't seem to have been followed. But we're, we're concerned, just to speak on Shenrock's part, and I'm comfortable to say here, given just the nature of a busy holiday weekend at the dead end of Stuyvesant Avenue, all of the safety concerns about the mooring fields, which we do a butt, AYC's mooring fields, we feel the same from a safety standpoint. But just from a logistical standpoint at Stuyvesant Avenue, you know, there's going to be more traffic than just bands. There's going to be friends of band members that want to come down, there's going to be people that get wind of this event and come down Stuyvesant Avenue. If you've come down Stuyvesant Avenue to American Yacht Club, Shenrock Shore Club, and I'm comfortable speaking for my colleague at Coveley Club as well, our clubs are jam-packed with holiday activity. Our, our parking's at a premium, and it's not that we want to oppose such a great community event, but our club can afford to give a parking allowance to the event. So I'm comfortable standing here in front of, of, of this board, saying, you know, not because we wouldn't want to support such a great event, but just logistically speaking, with our own member use and our limited facility space at such a tight corridor, I can say a hundred percent confidently, we are not going to allow use of any of our parking lot or any of our power. And I, I'll, you know, and that's, that's what that is on behalf of Shenrock. And again, I think just speaking to, to Commodore's point, too, it's just really the safety as far as the, the mooring fields go and the harbors go. And then the land part is just, with a hundred percent confidence on behalf of my board saying, we just would not be able to give an allowance of parking or power for this.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Randy, Jill, Tommy?
I'll just put on the record that I have deep concerns about potential liability. I'm just going to put that on the record, those are my feelings, and if this issue does come back to us, I think those will remain regardless. So I just want to put that out there. And again, acknowledging that it's a fantastic event, and I wish you all the best. I am not comfortable as a lawyer and a citizen of the town of Rye having us, having it happen on, on town property.
I don't have a problem, as long as you get all your quirks done with the yacht clubs in the city of Rye, you get their permissions and whatever you can work out with them, I, you know, then I wouldn't have a problem. But as the safety concerns that you're dealing with the moorings, that, that's an issue. And I can understand that, but you'd have to work it out with them.
Randy, anything? Okay. I think that the consensus of the, of the council is that it's premature right now, and that I think there needs to be some negotiation done between Rock the Boat and both, both the Shore Club and the Yacht Club, as well as the Rye Police Department, and see if you guys can all come up with a consensus. Maybe that this is just not the right place for it. I think we're all agreed on one thing, it's a great event. The only question is, where should it be held? All right? Thank you very much.
All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Resolution, tax cert? Charlie?
All right, good evening. We have a tax cert for four twenty-seven East Boston Post Road in Merrick. It is a small Dunkin' Donuts on Post Road. It was two years at, that we have here, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, two small reductions. We have let the village and the school district know of this. For the town, it's approximately three hundred and thirty dollars in a refund. Village is approximately thirty-three hundred dollars, and the school district is approximately eleven thousand dollars. Yes, they are all aware, we spoke to them in the last meeting.
I have one question. What about the, have you spoken about, with them about the twenty-four?
We've already spoken, and that's been handled. So there, there's no issue with the twenty-four, it's been adjusted for the, the new assessment rule.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Motion in a second, please?
Second.
Hope, please call the roll.
Counselperson Jaffe? Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi?
Yes.
Counselperson Selyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes. Columbus State Parade and Festivities donation, this is something that we do every year. It's in our budget to approve a donation of five thousand. It's in our budget to approve a donation of $5,000 to the Colum- Columbus Day Celebration Committee.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Comment?
No, this is a good event. It's a nice event. So that's.
Pam, would you like to make a comment?
I'll make the same comment I've made for four years. It would be nice to be, I think, nice to hold holidays on the day. Um, if you have a Columbus Day, it's Indigenous People's Day considering it's in Portchester, which is, you know, the hub of indigenous community here in the town of Rye. So I approve it, but I do think that we need to be a little bit broader in terms of that inclusion.
Well, there's always, there's always a group that's in the parade that represents them. So they do, they are, they are invited to the parade. They are there.
But, you know, but it is the Indigenous People's Day, not the state of Portchester. I understand the Italian culture is central to Portchester, but so is the indigenous culture.
No, I, I, I don't have a problem, but I just wanted to recognize that they are invited and they do, they are recognized on that day.
I think that, I asked, I asked for your comment, Pam, because I know how you feel about it. And I wanted to get it out there and I wanted you to be able to express that view. And I think that it's something we should look into in the future because I think more and more people are becoming aware of Indigenous People's Day. And I think that it's something that, that we should discuss more fully in the future. So, um, did we have a motion in a second yet? We did.
Tony moved it.
Yes. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Jaffe? I'm sorry.
Repeat? I think she said yes.
Councilperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Councilperson Nardi?
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes. That completes our resolutions. Uh, comments from the public? On any matter not on the agenda? Not hearing any reports. Charlie, do you have a, a report? I know that, I know that stuff has happened since the last, since the last meeting.
Yes, I just want to remind the public that the tentative 2024 assessment rule is now on the website. All the change of assessment notices are on the website. They've been mailed out. Um, June 18th, which is next Tuesday, is our grievance date. Uh, between two and four and four and six. If you want to call ahead to schedule an appointment to, for a time to speak to the board, you're more than welcome. If not, you can, you're more than happy to just walk in and have a conversation with the board. If you have any questions, give us a call. We have all the cells that we use for the analysis on the website. If you have any problems filling it out, you're more than welcome to stop in and we'll have somebody help you fill it out. And if you have any questions, you can speak to me or Gordon Caseman, which is our property appraiser, AKA deputy assessor. But if, like I said, if there's any questions, please stop in and we'd be happy to talk to you.
You're available? Make it clear. You're available for people to come in and speak.
So me, so me, so me and the assessor, I mean, the deputy assessor at any point in regards to the value? And we'll explain to you how we came to that.
In advance of filing a grievance because you may be able to resolve it informally without the need for grievance.
Yes, we can stipulate to the value.
Okay. Excellent. How many grievances have been filed so far?
A hundred and twenty.
How does that compare with last year at this time?
That's way down. So that's good and we only have a few more days to collect them. So fingers crossed, hopefully we get, we get the values perfect like we usually do, so. But yes, we're, everything's looking beautiful right now.
All righty, good. Thank you, Charlie. You know, just a comment. Um, people have called me and expressing great satisfaction that the role was put up even prior to the first online and that the, some people got their assessments, written assessments actually on June 1st, which is a great testament to you personally and to your office. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Crawford Park, report of activities. Candy has filed her report. And it is in the agenda packet. I don't think it needs to be expounded upon. There's a list of the events that we've had. Just, um, 2024 compared to 2023, January to May. Our revenue is up slightly and our municipal and school events are also up actually substantially. So Candy, these charts are very nice. Thank you very much.
Can I, there's a slide that I have on the report for the art show that we had on June 1st.
Yes, I, I know that. I see, I'm looking at it. It's beautiful.
So we thought that perhaps maybe the artwork could be displayed here at Crawford Park. And so we spoke to the supervisor of Fine Arts and Performing Arts, Catherine Sensabaugh. And she has allowed us to have some of the art pieces. So she's slowly bringing them in and she did bring one here today that we can actually start displaying some of the artwork here at Crawford. So.
I think that's great. Another community activity, showing the artwork of our local artists here, I think is actually fantastic.
Yeah. So that's.
Thank you, Candy. And if you look, do you, do you have the, uh, just show up the, the public event art show slide. Can you just bring that up?
Um, I don't, I don't think it's loaded on the, uh, on the drive.
Yeah, the one in your hand, Joe.
Yeah. Uh, yes, it is. There it is. It's really beautiful. So if, unless I mistake it, it looks like that very piece that's in Candy's hands is up in the, in the picture. So it's displayed on our wall.
Which one is it? I'm looking for it.
Um, this one?
I think it's right. That looks like it.
On the low right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So one of the, one of the things I want to point out is that we deliberately installed picture rails around the circumference of many of the rooms for the purpose of hanging art from them. So I'm particularly delighted that this is being put to use. What a great idea.
Fantastic. Thank you, Candy.
You're welcome.
Well done.
So other, other things happening at Crawford. We have a concert coming up. Oh, yes, I do. Thank you.
Big Better Ego Director Grounds Facilities. Uh, we have, you know, uh, seven concerts coming up over the summer. Very first one is, uh, next Saturday, June 22nd. It's Gil Paris and Friends. He's been here now two full seasons. He's done two, two concerts last year, one year before. He's well-followed. The second one is on the 28th and that'll be Funk Salsa Urban. And if you haven't seen these guys, they're actually on all our posters. They're, they're a lot of fun. They really are. Last year for the Halloween event we had, they came out and, uh, they did their concert and they did Ghostbusters and I happened to be dressed as a Ghostbuster. So they made me come up. But they're a lot of fun. We're doing the movies late because the sun stays up till nine o'clock and parents usually don't stay for the whole movie. So we're starting on August 31st and we're running September and October. And this way it'll be dark earlier and the children can stay around and have a good time. Also with the art show, which, um, that was totally Candy's idea with Catherine. We're, we're displaying the students' art. So, I mean, the picture she showed was a Portchester student. And I think that's great and we're going to do a revolving change of pictures and photos that the students are doing throughout the year. So this way, you know, the, the upper floor here will have student art everywhere. I know we have Juneteenth coming.
June 22nd?
June 22nd. Same as Gil Paris. So it'll be a busy day for me. It's, we're going to do the, well, my part of it is we're going to be doing the cleaning of the headstones, which we started last year and has turned out real well. I do have a very good friend, close friend, that'll be speaking that day. Uh, his name is Joseph Holland. Um, he's written five books, um, last one being, I forget what the name of it is. But anyway, um, he's very big on African-American history. The ball field, how about we, you want to say anything more about Juneteenth first?
Well, I just wanted to add, um, there's a young woman who came to a recent town council meeting in April, very excited about the research and data collection that we're doing in the African-American cemetery. And she has, um, she is a full member of the planning committee for the Juneteenth event and is working closely with David Thomas and is organizing several students to, um, also to be a part of the beginning of our program to provide oral histories of some of the people who are buried at the African-American cemetery. So we're very pleased. They're, they represent all of the high schools in the town of Rye. Except for one. Yes, true. So, uh, we have, we have students from Blime Brook, uh, the city of Rye and Rynek, but we do not have any students yet from Portchester. But we would be welcome if anybody wants to volunteer. So we're, we're very excited about the students being involved in our, our, uh, our, our program and in our service project. And our service project, we will be joined by representatives from the Osborne Home who have been our partner in this event for several years now.
It's better and better and bigger and bigger. Very pleased.
Okay, the ball field. Our architect, Gary Gianfrancisco, and myself will be meeting with, uh, GPS who did the ball field tomorrow to go over some, uh, checkpoints on our list to, for corrections to the ball field. So right now the lawn looks, for the most part, very, very good. Uh, the baseball field needs some work. So I'll let you know after tomorrow's meeting how it goes.
When, when do you think we'll be able to have our first event there? Are you looking at August? Are you looking a little early?
Probably, it's a good possibility. We could probably do it in the middle of July. If you left it up to me, it wouldn't be till September when soccer starts.
We'll see what kind of demand we have.
Yes, I know. But once that baseball field is done, I believe we'll be getting more baseball, softball than we've had in the past.
Good job. Thank you, Vic. Davey, do you have any report for us? Dave Burns?
Yep. I'm here. Uh, the report was submitted for the receivables report. I don't know if there's any questions, but we're in good shape and we're, we're down to 1% of the, the tax levies as a receivable. So we're, we've got it under control. That's the low. It's usually a amount that we shoot for by the end of the year. And so we're able to, uh, invest the excess funds in class and, and CDs so we can earn interest on, um, for the town.
Thank you. And is, is Nick on? Well, I'll just say that, um, we have approximately 10 properties that are scheduled to go in REM after July 1st, which is not a large number, but 10 more than we would hope. And we're going to start those. Any, anybody who may be listening to this, who may have gotten a notice, please, I'll, I'll take a page out of Nick's book. Please come in and pay your taxes.
Anyone, any person, anyone who owns property in the village of Portchester and the village of Ry Brook, that the first installment of the village of Ry Brook tax is due by June 30th and the first half of the Portchester village tax is due by June 30th. If you did not receive a bill, please call the office. We'll make sure that.
Thank you to the former receiver of taxes, who knows all of these things. Jeff, Town Attorney Report, do you have anything? Have I stolen your thunder with the INRAM? Well, tell us about the, the tax cert meeting that we're going to have shortly. And what we do and why we do it.
This is a standing meeting that we've had, uh, at times quarterly, three times a year. We're doing it roughly three times a year with all the stakeholders that are, are affected by tax cert refunds, the school districts, the villages, um, and the town. And we go over each and every tax cert of great concern to these stakeholders, uh, with individualized meetings, uh, you know, by the business managers or the, or the village managers. And we've been doing this now for about six years, which is, um.
The elected officials are invited, but they never show. Only, only one elected official has ever shown up, other than me.
Elected officials and we've actually had school board members who are elected officials start to show up, yeah. It's actually, to the supervisor's great credit, it's provided a very good flow of information for budgeting purposes for the school districts and the villages. Uh, they know what's coming down the pipe. They ask questions about some of the major properties that, uh, that have cases before us. And Dan Tartalia and myself, we handle the tax cert cases on an ongoing basis and have an ongoing dialogue with the stakeholders, which has lowered their blood pressure come budget time. So it's, uh, it's a good thing.
Thank you. Town Clerk, I know your report is filed, but you have something you want to tell us all?
Yes, it's right on the screen, the mobile shredder event. The county shredder will be coming to the village of Portchester parking lot, 222 Grace Church Street. It's a great, um, event and we, we get loads of calls concerning this. So just want to remind everyone who wants to have their information shredded come between 10 and 1 on July 13th, because our meeting will be after that. But we'll have it in, in the newspaper and on cable. Our next meeting will be after that.
Oh, the next meeting.
The next meeting will be after that.
So you're announcing it now in advance of that? Yes. And is there a limit to how much stuff people could bring?
They ask that you bring four boxes, but then you could get back in line and go around if you have more, which people do. Yes.
Four boxes.
If I cleaned out my house, it would be 40 boxes.
A little bit of tough work, but you have to get back in line, but it goes quickly.
Okay. Anything else? Comments from?
There are no comments from the public. Um, I would
I already asked for comments from the public, Rick.
Oh, I thought you just did.
This is a public service announcement.
All right. You could, you could have done that before too, but yes, you may.
Well
Please approach.
Thank you very much. As long as we're in that mode of, you know, public service announcements. For residents of the town of Rye, early voting starts in the Democratic primary, Saturday the 15th. That was for two positions, Westchester County D A, and also for Congressional District 16, for the House of Representatives. Starts, the only location in the town of Rye is at the Rybrook Firehouse. In the city of Rye, I believe it's at Resurrection in Harrison, it's in St. Gregory's Church, but in the town of Rye, the only place that you can go is at the Rybrook Firehouse, and I suggest that those who want to go vote can go vote Saturday on their way to Rybrook's birthday party at King Street Fields. Thank you.
You, you mean that the early voting?
Early voting is
Right. That's the only place early voting is.
Early voting. I didn't, yeah, you're right, thank you, because that's important. It's different on the 25th.
So on the 25th, everybody votes in their normal
Where they normally vote.
And on early voting
Do you know the hours for early voting?
Uh, it depends on the day, Sat, this Saturday is 10 to 6, but you do have to check, because sometimes it starts at 8:00 in the morning also. So it would be on the county website.
And you can vote early voting at any early voting place? In other words, you can vote in the town of Rye, even if you live in Harrison, or if you live in Harrison, you can vote in the town of Rye, if you have to work here, which is something they should do for regular voting too, but they'll get there eventually. And you've, you started to mention, Rybrook Day is also on Saturday at
King Street Fields.
King Street, that's at, is it 12 or 2?
12.
12. 12, 12 to 4.
The town of Rye will have a booth. I also wanted to advise the council that the Otter Creek Bridge project is moving forward. And at the moment, on schedule, last week, the Westchester Land Trust Board approved the, the, the small parcel of land, which will need to be transferred, purchased by the town for this, at, which we will do at a time that the Department of Transportation approves such transaction, but it has been approved.
By the seller.
Correct.
The land trust
By the seller. Thank you.
At the grand total price of?
Oh, good, specifically, it's a hair under $1,700.
So, it's not going to impact our budget.
Right.
And besides that, it's already accounted for in the, in the grant budget.
Right, and we are, we're now being added, we're, we'll be on the next agenda, next week's agenda for the Marinack Coastal Commission. That's it.
I didn't even know we had to go, I thought we didn't have to go to the Coastal Commission, we do have to go.
Well, we don't, we don't need a wetlands permit, but if the Coastal Commission has questions, we must answer them.
Okay. Who's appearing for them? H V E A?
I've offered H V E A. I haven't received a response yet.
Okay. Is that via Zoom or in person?
Don't know.
Do we have any comments from the council people before we leave?
Just to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, and also to come out to the Juneteenth, Juneteenth. It's a lot of history in that cemetery, so go have a good time.
And come to our Crawford Park events.
Yes.
With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.